This is great getting people back in here.
Hello. Good. We have a microphone on. That was a strange sound coming from the corner. This is the City of Marshawn Council Chambers at 10 West State Street. Today's date, September 14, 2020, at times 5:30 PM. Time for our regularly scheduled city council meeting. And welcome to those who are able to join by telephone and/or computer and those that were here in person. Social distancing, everybody wore masks in. If you have at least six feet separation like I do, I also am okay with people taking the masks off so that we can hear you better. Now that we're called to order, let me read a notice to the public, which is that the mayor and council welcome comment from the public during discussion of the agenda items. You have to step to the mics, state your name and address for the record. Limit your time to three minutes so others may speak. Speak clearly and direct your comments to the mayor and council and not to any consular specifically. It's at the discretion of the mayor and council to respond to those specific questions and comments or to have staff respond during the meeting. Would those who are able join us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Roll call, please.
Cahill, here. Gowdy?
Here.
Hoop?
Here.
Isom?
Here.
Martin?
Here.
Thompson?
Here.
Warren?
Here.
Very good. Thank you. Before inviting any council administrator to comment, it's my understanding that we have some years of service to recognize tonight. Chief Tupper.
Mayor Greer, could we move on to the next item? Because one of the officers that's supposed to be here is on his way here. He got sent on a call. He's on his way. If we could just delay that a little bit?
Duty calls. We can sure do that. And so the next item is actually a proclamation that I'd like to read to the public. And it is as follows. Whereas Latinos and Hispanics have enriched Iowa communities since the late 1800s and play a vital role in Iowa's economy and workforce with cultural, educational, and political influences. This can be seen and appreciated in all aspects of life. And whereas Iowans of Latino and Hispanic origin make up 6% of the state's populations, making it the largest race or ethnic minoritized group in the state and making it the largest such group in Marshalltown, making significant contributions to our workforce, economy, and business community. And whereas Latinos are individuals that are from or are descendants from Latin America and may speak Creole, Dutch, English, Italian, Spanish, Patios, Portuguese, French, and many regional indigenous languages, uh-oh, such as Quechua, Aymara, Guarani, Mayan, Nahuati, and more. And whereas, I should have asked people how to pronounce those before reading this proclamation. Also, whereas Hispanics are individuals that speak Spanish and are descendants from Spanish-speaking countries, including Spain. And whereas Latino and Hispanic Heritage Month is an opportunity to celebrate the vibrant traditions of people whose ancestry can be traced to the Caribbean Islands, Central America, Mexico, South America for Latinos, and Spain. And whereas, in keeping with the national theme, Latino and Hispanic Americans, a history of serving our nation, we celebrate more than 5,000 years of history and heritage of Latino and Hispanic Americans. Now therefore, I, Joel Greer, Mayor of the City of Marshawn, Iowa, do hereby proclaim September 15 through October 15 of 2020 as Latino and Hispanic Heritage Month in the City of Marshawn and urge citizens to observe this month by increasing their awareness of the valuable ways Latinos and Hispanics have contributed to our city's prosperity. In witness whereof, I have sent my hand and caused my seal to be affixed on the 14th day of September 2020. Joel Greer from Marshawn. And I'd like to note, just as a side note, that at 4 o'clock today, we had a meeting of some of the business leaders from those communities. And that is the first of what I expect to be regular meetings to make sure that the city is responsive to their needs and wants and suggestions. And we move to do a better job of integrating than we ever have as a city that feeds itself by being one of diversity and proud of that diversity. I'm happy to sign this proclamation. I'm sorry that we didn't do this last year. This should be an annual event. Chief, did we give your officers time to? Okay, I got the high sign. Let's resume the years of service commendations.
They're being shy about coming in now. If you want to take the mask off, you're okay. Because they're going to want to get some pictures, so. Mike Tupper, Marshawn Police Department. So it's my honor and privilege to serve the community as your police chief. And last month, these gentlemen all celebrated significant work anniversaries. And last month was a little busy for all of us. And I didn't get it on the agenda in time. So they're here this week, or this month, so we can recognize their years of service. Because it's important that we thank them for everything that they do for us. So we're blessed in Marshawn to have a superstar police department. People that are working their tails off every day, providing phenomenal service in our community. And these three officers are three of our best. So at my far right is Lieutenant Kyle Stevenson. Kyle, you've probably seen him here before, actually, because he's been a K-9 officer for our department twice now, right? He currently serves on our tactical team, is in charge of our tactical team. He's a lieutenant on our night shift and has just done a phenomenal job. And really, he's celebrating 15 years, but he's been promoted twice already. So he's really done a phenomenal job in that amount of time. So and then right next to him is Officer Logan Wolf. And Logan is celebrating five years with the City of Marshawn. And he came to us with a public safety background because he worked for the Marshall County Jail for a period of time before he came here. So public safety is in his blood. Logan has shown a desire and a skill set to serve people as a crisis negotiator. And I don't know if you were at that training today, but I know you have some -- he was at that training today. So he's going to receive some crisis negotiation training. Now Logan is one of those people that is blessed with the gift of gab. And he can talk to people in a variety of circumstances. And he has shown the ability to de-escalate problems and bring people back down so we can control situations without having to use force or sometimes even talk people out of being arrested. Okay? That's just as important as anything. So I appreciate everything that Logan does for us. And then right behind me is Officer Brad Mossif. Now Brad is also celebrating 15 years of service with the department. And he's kind of a jack-of-all-trades for us. Does a lot of stuff for the police department. He's been heavily involved with IT issues for pretty much your whole career, I'm guessing. I know ever since I've been here, he's my go-to person for technology stuff. Brad is also one of those special police officers that works really well with everybody in a variety of situations, is able to control situations without having to be heavy-handed. And he's also a master of de-escalation, which we're very proud of. So I just feel very blessed to be able to work with all three of these gentlemen. And they're peers at the police department. Again, we have a police department that's full, top to bottom, with exceptional people. So I appreciate your service. I appreciate everything that you do for us on a daily basis. They have a tough job, if you haven't noticed. And in the year 2020, it's really tough to be a police officer. And they, in this community, it's a little bit different because your community supports you and they appreciate what you do. But when you turn on the news, it doesn't always feel that way. So I want you to know that I support you and I appreciate you. And so does this body up here. And we're very excited to have you as a member of our team and to celebrate these work anniversaries with you. And you've got a long ways to go before you can retire. Kyle and Brad are only about halfway done, really. So they all have bright futures ahead of them. And congratulations on your years of service. I appreciate it.
While the reporter wants to take a picture of all of you, I'd like to also thank your families because we have a pretty good idea that this isn't just a one-person-at-a-time deal. It takes a whole family to support a police officer. We're on our third "Back Our Blue" sign at our home and office. One broke, but I invite people that feel the same way to pick those up at the new fire and police station. You got that okay? Are you good, Tom? Okay. Thank you, gentlemen. At this time, I would appreciate a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I have some announcements I would like to make if possible.
Oh, I didn't do the announcements, did I? No, I should have invited a comment up here and with you. Let me start with the consulars. Anybody up here who'd like to speak?
Your Honor?
Ms. Martin.
I'd like to offer my commendation to Chief Fryerson and the Fire Department for their understanding and their proactive position in modifying the open burning. I think the quadrant burning permission is exceptional and needed. It certainly saves a bigger blaze, of course, on October 1st. And I hope it protects our storm sewer. So my hat is off to the Fire Department and Chief Fryerson. Thank him a lot.
Thanks, Ms. Martin. Appreciate it. Anybody else? If not, city administrator.
Yes, I have just a few things. We put it out this last week that we'll stop making the rounds of the city, meaning vehicles just driving around looking for debris piles at the end of this week on September 18th. However, you can still call the Public Works Department at 754-5734 if you have a contractor who's made it at a later time in order to get that debris out to the curb. So we'll no longer, at the end of this week, will no longer be just driving around. You'll be required to call in in order for us to come and pick that up. There is also going to be Wednesday at 9:00 AM a groundbreaking on the Edgewood Extension located next to the substation owned by Alliant Energy on Marion Street. So not the greatest location, but that is where it will be. And we'll be putting out some press releases following that as well.
Thank you. With that now, before inviting a motion to approve the consent agenda, I know we need to make one note that there's a payment listed under the category of advertising for MCSD at $342,000. And that should be and will be listed under contracts and will be corrected before it's published. And it deals with the commitment to help provide for the tennis courts and other courts at the high school under a joint relationship between the city and school district. With that comment made, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Very good. Madam Clerk, would you? Well, no, I guess we vote first and then read them second, don't we?
Okay. Cahill?
Yes.
Gowdy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Warren?
Yes.
Very good. Thanks. And now in your fastest radio voice.
Approve minutes of the August 24, 2020, meeting and the bill list of $4,169,666.88. Approve the civil service list for the police officer new hire list. Appoint Thomas Mack to the water board. Approve liquor license renewals for Aldi's Inc., store number 43 at 2405 South Center Street. Quick Star, number 394 at 2500 South Center Street. Approve tree trimmer license for Dicky's Tree Service and Landscape, Integrity Services, JNA Construction, Thorpe Logging and Land Clearing, Wolf Creek Stump Removal. Approve the agreement for hazardous limb removal and clearing of city parked trees with Thorpe Sawmill and Pallet. Receipt of the building permit report for July and August 2020. Resolution authorizing the city to submit a U.S. Environmental Protection Agency EPA Brownfields Assessment Grant. Resolution approving contract change orders number 40 and 43 for the Veterans Memorial Coliseum renovation project, an increase of $651.49. Resolution requesting reimbursement from the Iowa COVID-19 Government Relief Fund. Resolution accepting a bid of $124,272 from Cerro Delorio Masonry and Landscape for the repair of the City Hall roof tornado damage. Resolution accepting an offer of $135,001 from Rosemont Companies LLC for the purchase of city-owned land along East Southridge Road. Resolution approving contract change order number one for tree grinding project, win 20001, an increase of $500,000.
Thank you. Let's go on to item G, which is motions. Would you read the first one, please?
An approval for a midnight ballroom liquor license. Pending the license is submitted to local authority before September 25, 2020. They are applying for a five-day license with a premise change from Central Iowa Fair to the midnight ballroom in order to hold a rodeo event at the fairgrounds on Saturday, September 26.
Is there a motion to approve it?
I move for approval. Second.
Any discussion? I kind of don't think we need public discussion, but if anybody thinks we do on this one, raise your hand. Okay. Hands are up. Timer is on. 20 seconds. You're never not going to raise your hand, are you?
So you should just stop asking, too.
I'm Irish.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor. I'm sorry. I did not mean to.
That's disrespect.
Say that in a disrespectful way. I apologize.
I didn't detect any disrespect.
Graduate of the Gary Thompson School of Disrespect.
20 seconds is up. Okay. Let's call the roll.
Gowdy?
Yes.
Hoop?
No.
Isom?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Warren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
My not wanting to call for public comments is about as predictable as the L-Hoop vote, no, on those items. Some of us are getting pretty predictable. How about the next resolution then, please?
Resolution authoring the issuance of $9,590,000 general obligation corporate purpose and refunding bonds, Series 2020A, and providing for the levy of taxes to pay the same.
Let's call for a motion first.
So moved, Your Honor.
Is there a second?
Second.
Let's do discussion next.
Diana Steiner, Finance Director. As you know, we put the bonds out for bid in August. And we got a AA2 bond rating. And this particular bond for $9,590,000, $3 million of it is for refunding of current bonds to get a lower interest rate. We also received a premium of $166,000. And our true interest rate was .7949, which is excellent. So therefore, we ask you to authorize this bond issuance.
Thank you. Any questions or comments by the consulars? I can't remember in the years I've been sitting up here anything as low as that. Is that kind of a record setter?
It is a record setter, yeah, for Spear Financial. They said that that was the lowest they've ever had.
Was it the lowest for them for the whole state?
Yeah.
Okay, good.
Do we get a coffee cup from them?
Only if it's under $3.00.
How about some cheap plastic pens? Okay, well, is there any other? I guess I need to call for a public comment. Start the clock.
The lines are unmuted.
I'm going to have to start bringing jokes for these 20 seconds. Okay, that's good. Let's call the roll on this one.
Hoop?
No.
Isom?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Warren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Gowdy?
Yes.
Very good. That one carried. Let's go on to the next one.
Resolution authorizing the issuance of $2,030,000 taxable general obligation airport improvement bonds, Series 2020B, and providing for the levy of taxes to pay the same.
Move for approval.
Thank you.
Second.
Discussion.
Diana Steiner, Finance Director. These are actually taxable bonds. So our interest rate was a little bit higher. We came in at 1.11%. Still a great rate. So I ask that you approve the authorization of these bonds.
Questions or comments for Diana? Public comment. Time is up. Thank you. Roll call.
Martin?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Warren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Gowdy?
Yes.
Hoop?
No.
Isom?
Yes.
Very good. That carried as well. We have no ordinances on the table tonight. So now we go to item K, which is discussion. Madam Clerk, would you read the first item of those?
Discussion of update on fiscal year '21 local option sales tax.
Diana?
Diana Steiner, Finance Director. So in August, we received our estimated local option sales tax payments. They will total $3.6 million. We had only budgeted $3.4 in March when we passed the budget. We are very surprised that this increased because of the COVID and people not shopping as much as we thought. They must have been shopping online. So our payments actually are coming in higher. So therefore, I want to talk to you about some items here. So last May, when I brought this to you and our projection of having a lower option sales tax revenues, we talked about reducing some items. So on this new budget, on item number one here on this row, I did update to our $3.6 million revenue increase. And so one of the items we talked about was to not make the cash flow reserve, and that was $60,314. So my question to you is, do you want to make that now? Or do you still want to defer that until later in the year?
Any input on it?
Diana, can I ask a question, please? Sorry. Can you just run down the pros and cons of doing it now versus later? Well, when our budget says that, when we, we put it in our May budget. So therefore, you know, when people are looking at our budget, if it's already made, then we're already at our budget. If we're not going to make it, then when we do the budget amendment in March, we'll take it back out. But you have time to decide that. So again, really no advantage or disadvantage one way or the other? Not really. I mean, you would get interest if we moved it over there. A little bit more interest in the cash flow reserve if we moved it now.
Your Honor?
Yes.
I guess with the reasoning that we originally moved it not being there anymore, I don't see a reason why we wouldn't do what we already were going to do from a budget perspective. So I guess moving it back to how we were, the original budget prior to the COVID discussion, I would be in favor of doing that. Now, not later.
Anyone else?
Your Honor?
Yes, sir.
So we're operating on the assumption we're going to move it eventually, right? I mean, there's nobody that's saying we don't move it? Am I hearing that correctly?
We originally decided that we weren't going to move it over.
No, I mean that, just because of the shortfall. But now, we don't have the shortfall that we thought. So I guess what I'm saying, I'm asking, is there anybody that sees another reason not to move it? Because I agree with you, Gabe, that, you know, if we're going to move it, just put it back. Well, I guess I would second Gabe's, if that was a motion.
Do you need a motion for that?
Direction.
Wouldn't hurt.
Direction.
Let's call it a motion. Second then by Gary.
Okay.
So just a quick question. Is that the only topic on the table right now?
No.
No, there's two other items. You want to go through those?
I'd kind of like to hear those first, yes.
Item number three is the downtown new construction incentive. So originally, the council, and we budgeted $250,000. We've already spent $100,000 in fiscal year '20. We've already committed another $100,000 for fiscal year '21. And last May, when we thought we'd have a shortfall, we decided to move it from $250,000 down to $200,000. So do you now want to restore the additional $50,000?
Your Honor, one thing I'll add to that. I would say at this point, there is not a new construction project in the downtown area that we are imminently aware of to provide you guidance one way or the other. But I think it would be helpful if you choose not to put that $50,000 back or take it, that you would be open to considering grants for future projects that would be new construction in the downtown on a case-by-case basis.
Your Honor?
Yes, sir.
Jessica, clarify, that money was coming out of local option sales tax?
Yes, that's correct.
Exactly. And there was no other source for that?
Correct.
And is, if it's not there, do you think it's deterring people from even starting a conversation with you and Michelle?
No, I don't think so because I think it's still something that we would talk about as something that the council has done previously for a new construction project. And so as long as I would say that we have the willingness to mention that's something that the council could consider as part of an incentive package, I don't think that I would have any issues with you not designating that remaining $50,000. Does that make sense? Okay.
Thank you. I just don't want to turn anybody away or give them any, if we don't move it, I don't want to give anybody the wrong sense that we would not consider it since we've set the precedent.
I think if that's the direction that you would like us to go, that is definitely something Michelle and I can communicate as we have more projects come up.
I mean, it doesn't matter to me. I mean, I just want to, I think it's a good program. We need to continue it. I just don't know if we need the money sitting there unless there's an interest thing on this, too?
No.
Not on this one, right?
And we would come back anyway, you know, if there was someone that needed money, someone that needed the $50,000, we'd come back again. You'd have to authorize it anyway. It's just whether it's budgeted or not.
It'd be a resolution for us, right? Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Yep. Other comments or questions up here?
The only other change was just, when we did have a shortfall, we moved the council designated funds over to the property tax levy in order to make those bond payments. So now we don't need to do that. So now we're back to the original version. So basically, these changes are just restoring what we had in the March budget when it was adopted.
Any input? I guess we do have a motion pending, but it was kind of limited to the first of the three things. Would you like staff direction on all three at the same time?
Yes, the two, basically. I'm assuming that since we didn't need the council designated funds for the bond payments, you're fine with that. We're just not moving the money over. So we just need a direction on the cash flow reserve and then the $50,000 downtown new construction incentive.
Your Honor, do we need Gabe to modify his motion?
Better start all over again?
You can amend it. I could amend it.
Yeah.
So I moved to amend it to include the, sorry, what was it?
Downtown incentive program?
Downtown incentive funds.
Okay. Is there a motion, is there a second to the motion to amend?
Second.
Any discussion about that one? Let's just call the roll on the amendment and then I'll call for public discussion on the motion if it carries.
Martin?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Warren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Gowdy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Ah, yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Okay, that amendment carried. And so now the motion is pending on all three items[1773.87] to restore them back to the budget as it had been. Is there anybody else wanting to comment up here or out in the public that's present? Or online or on the phone? Start the clock. You know, probably 15 seconds gives people enough time to unmute, but we have hit 20, so I think we're good, ready to vote.
Cahill?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Warren?
Yes.
Very good. The staff has direction on that one. And our next discussion item is number two, and that is discussion of incentives for the new Fairway store. Who would like to start that discussion?
I'm going to start that discussion, Your Honor, and I am going to see, Kobe, I believe, is online. And so Kobe Pritchard, who was with us last meeting from Fairway Stores, is available to answer any questions. In the last three weeks, he was able to provide us some information for us to be able to figure out of the things that they were requesting, you know, reimbursement for. What did that total up to be compared to the nearly $65,000 difference over the three-year life of the tax abatement? And so as you can see, when we totaled everything up, you know, it looked like it was about 60, a little over $60,000 compared to the 65 that they would be missing out on. And so it's not a significant difference in between those. But my request would be that if the council does choose to move forward with something, that we would not be doing things on a reimbursement basis, that there would be a grant of some sort, very much like we just discussed with the downtown grant. And that ultimately, I do believe local option sales tax is the ideal funding source for doing something specific for this project. So Kobe, I didn't know if you had anything to add?
Uh, nope. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes.
Thanks, Jessica. Yep, and good to talk to everybody again. I hope this information maybe gives a little bit of a clearer picture of where we're coming from. So I'm happy to take any, any questions. The other cool thing that's going on, obviously, we've got the work going at the store. So I'm happy to really answer any questions about anything while I'm here. So happy to, happy to answer anything.
Anybody have any questions for Kobe?
Your Honor?
Yes, sir.
Kobe, I don't, this is Gary Thompson. I don't want to throw a wrench into the works, but I did have a conversation earlier today with Jessica. And I'm just curious, why wouldn't you sell portion of the lot to yourself and build the new store on that section of a separate lot and reap the benefit of the three-year tax abatement off a new build, a $4 million building versus a parking lot? Then the other building wouldn't even come into play. I mean, I have no idea what that would cost you to survey that and do all that. But I guess I'm asking, to keep us out of funding anything, or which I don't know if we will or not. I'm just not saying that. I'm just saying, there's probably a plan out there that actually, with the policies we have in place, it would benefit you more.
Yeah, maybe I'll, maybe I'll have you elaborate a little bit more on what you're thinking. But, you know, the point of what we're trying to do with the location of where the rebuild is and also having that side lot is to eventually, you know, develop next to us. Are you, are you saying that we should have split off in a different way to reap the benefit? Or what are you saying there?
I was going to say, Kobe, the conversation that I had with Councilmember Thompson was about, could you do a single parcel split of the larger lot that you have right now to create basically a lot that would be just for the new store? And then ultimately, when you went to, if you wanted to subdivide what remained after, you would need to do a new subdivision. But that was the, the conversation of is, could you split off from what you currently have some, a new parcel that the new store would be built on?
And the reason for that, Kobe, is then your abatement would be based on not the old building value, but just on the paved improvement value, which would actually, should generate you more than the $65,000 in savings.
Yeah, and honestly, I, I just don't know if that was in our, our original plan. I think with the three-year off-the-shelf plan, you know, we just identified a small need to maybe recapture something in the form of what we thought was public infrastructure. And we just felt this maybe was the, was the best way. So I had to, a long-winded answer to say, I guess it just really wasn't on our radar to do it that way.
Thank you. Thanks, Your Honor.
Mm-hmm. Other questions or comments? Jessica, does the staff need direction on this one?
Yes, because it is using council-designated local option sales tax, you would need to have a formal resolution come forward to approve anything. And so that would, we would be looking for a motion to move forward a resolution onto the next meeting with a dollar amount specified.
Anyone intend to make that motion?
Your Honor?
Yes, sir.
I would make a motion that we grant the $65,000 from local option sales tax and cap it at that for Fairway to build a new store, based on what we've done, what this body did in years past with Hy-Vee, and what this body has done in, with the Angel Supermarket up here on Center Street. I think they're only asking for $65,000, and that's a lot less than compared to their two competitors. So I would, I would move that we do that.
Thank you. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Second.
We'll go with Mr. Martin on the second. Thank you. Other discussion up at the Consular's Diaz?
Public dis-
Public discussion invited. And while we're waiting for public discussion, yeah, I'm taking, I'm reading the motion as being to direct staff to move forward in that direction.
To come back with a resolution for us, right?
Yes.
Okay, that's 20 seconds.
Let's vote.
Warren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Very good. Staff has direction on that one. The third item of discussion is discussion of MPD portable radio upgrade project for $225,000. Chief Tupper?
Mike Tupper, Marshalltown Police Department. You probably get tired of me coming up here asking for money. And this is a lot of money, but it's important project. So, long story short, there's a memo in your, in your packet. But the long story short is, we need to upgrade the hardware, our portable radios. They're compliant with current P-25 radio standards for law enforcement and public safety communication. But they're not compliant for Phase 2 of the P-25 process. And, and what that basically means, to try not to be too techie, is we won't have interoperability with other agencies in the event of a, of an emergency. We may be able to still communicate with each other, but as other people come in, they're Phase 2 compliant. We're not. We will lose interoperability. And the ability to communicate with other law enforcement and public safety agencies in the event of emergency is critical. So the good news is, our mobile radios, which are the radios in our police vehicles, all they require is a software upgrade. The bad news is, when the city of Marshalltown, many years ago now, purchased new portable radios, the radios that they purchased, we can't upgrade the software, so we have to buy new radios. And there's, currently, we own 48 portable radios. So they're very expensive. It's very expensive equipment, but it's critically important equipment to our public safety operations. So what I am requesting is your consideration on a radio project that would not exceed $225,000. I think we can come in a little bit under that, but it'll probably be pretty close to $225,000. We have 48 portable radios. Staff, after consulting with staff, we would like to actually have 50, because when all of our reserves are working, and all of our cops are working, we're out of radios. And if somebody's radio breaks, we don't have any extra. So we'd like to get up to 50. So we would be buying 50 new portable radios. And then we would be upgrading the software in our mobile police vehicles. So that's the long story short. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
So Chief, is this part of the capital improvement plan, or did this just kind of sneak up on us?
This has been hanging out there for a couple of years, honestly. And we could, we could buy a little more time, but at some point, we have to fix this problem. And so we have the CARES Act money that has, that has come available. So when it became available, I brought this to Jessica's attention. I thought this was a good time to take care of this. We could pass, but eventually, we're going to have to do it. And as you know, things don't get cheaper. As time goes on, things get more expensive. So my recommendation would be that we pursue this project now.
The tornado is probably the best example of a time when you need that sort of interoperability, isn't it?
Yeah. But we do so many things on a daily basis, working with law enforcement partners from around the state. And quite frankly, the federal government comes in, the FBI, ATF, DEA helps us with drug cases. We need to maintain that interoperability. And we're okay right now, but I can't promise you that we're going to be okay a year from now. And at some point, you know, Raycom has brought this to my attention, and we have to fix it. And it's not going to get any cheaper. So now seems to be the time.
Seems like there are other cities and townships in Marshall County that are looking at radio challenges right now, too, from the E-911 things that we know.
Yeah, and their issues are a little bit different from this issue. But yeah, there's, there's a lot of challenges in the county in general with radio communication.
Any questions or comments for the chief?
I have a question. I'm not sure if it's for the chief. Jessica, from what percentage or how does this affect the CARES funding that we receive?
Yes, so one of the items that was on the consent agenda earlier was to request our full allocation of just a little bit over $633,000 from the state. Diana Steiner worked many, many hours on this to figure out that one of the things the state was allowing us to request reimbursement for was 25 cent of public, 25% of public safety personnel costs, including benefits, wages and benefits, going back to March 1st. And so of the $633,000, it's, it's going to be 40% abouts thereof. The, the thing about the CARES Act dollars, though, is that we're not, even though we're requesting for a time period that's already closed, you know, with March through June 30th being the last fiscal year, not impacting this year's budget, our auditors told us we do not need to accrue that revenue back to last fiscal year and so that it's just generally available in the, in the general fund. So we'll receive those $633,000 and deposit them in the general fund to make sure that that fund is kept whole. I know we were talking about a loss in hotel motel tax, which I think was maybe around the 60,000 to 70,000 range, Diana? Does that sound right? So. So there were, yeah, there were some changes that we made to the general fund as well as we kind of went along there with recognizing some benefit, or some employee personnel savings that we had budgeted that we, we knew weren't going to happen in the fiscal year. So we'll ultimately be looking at where we're at come November, December, as we reestimate the budget for you all, and we'll have a better idea on some of our revenues. But the most volatile one that was going to impact us related to COVID was hotel motel tax. So, and we feel like with the total amount going into the general fund, we'll be able to, to cover that.
Thank you.
Your Honor?
Yes, sir.
Jessica, if I may, and the chief may be able to answer this, too. When, when you found out, you and Diana found out this amount was available through the CARES Act, who was begging for this money, or who, not begging, but who?
I'm always begging for money.
Who seemed, thanks, Chief, who seemed to have a need for this $633,000?
Well, I would just say in-
I mean, the whole city, obviously.
In, in general, the general fund. I mean, we don't want to do anything that's going to damage our ability to retain the amount of employees that we have and the positions that we currently have. And so I think that was, as we looked at that, that was always, and as we looked at it back in May, that was always our first priority, too, is that we didn't want to experience any disruptions in the general fund that were going to result in, in needing to furlough or lay off any positions. And, and we've been able to maintain that. So I would say there, the other thing that we talked about this supporting is the citizen survey at $21,000. And then the next request is from the, the chief as well. Otherwise, we really haven't talked about other requests in total. I will say that this, this item, and because of the dollar amount, it does not fit well into our CIP tax levy fund, which is about $600,000 annually. But that's split between parks, between fire, between police, between the library, any entity that'd be needing to buy new vehicles that is, you know, not associated with another fund. And so this one would be really difficult to schedule in that source of funds. It would probably lead us to coming before you at some point and saying, this probably fits either a borrowing situation, if it's a, we have to do right now, or we've, we've got to figure something out with local option sales tax or other funds.
And then Chief, follow-up if I may. When are you going to stop asking for money?
Well, I don't retire for about another four years, so you're going to have to put up with me. I work on a day-to-day contract, but as long as you keep me employed, I'll be back.
No, all kidding aside, is there other things on the works now? I mean?
Well, I'm getting ready to talk about another project, yeah.
Or something that you know of that's going to, not blindside us, but that we're going to see across at our desk later?
Not that I know of with the police department. I mean, if you want my wish list, we always need more people. Most of my department peers would say the same thing. And I'm talking about city department directors, because they all want more people, too, and they need more people. But as far as big projects go, this has been something I've been aware of for a couple of years. I've been trying to figure out, because of just what Jessica says, it doesn't really fit into CIP, I've been trying to figure out what I do. And we've been buying time, and we have time. We could continue to put it off. But at some point, we have to pay the piper, and we're going to have to do this. And it gets more expensive every year, so.
The fact that the city police department has been so good at its reputation in town has meant that when we replace dogs, bikes.
Yeah.
We need better protective gear. The community really does kind of step up and help on that, sort of like. I don't see that happening with radios.
No, no. And it's, that's a difficult ask for the community, too. I mean, we've been able to raise money for dogs, and we're going to have to do, we're going to have to buy dogs again. That is coming up. I'll be blunt with you there, because our dogs are getting ready to retire, quite frankly. And we've been able to raise money for body armor. That's a pretty easy ask. But this seems to be something that we should be providing through our normal budget efforts, I guess. And it's a, it's a big dollar figure. It is. But the good thing about this investment is, it is an investment in public safety. It's an investment in your police officers and in their safety. And, you know, we shouldn't be coming back to you about police radios anytime in the very near future. I will be long retired before you need police radios again. I know that much.
That was a question I was just going to ask. What is the lifespan of this purchase?
Yeah, well, you know, I, I would say that it's not unreasonable for us to say that we're going to get 10 years out of these radios, okay? But I know this is Marshalltown, so that means we'll get 20. That's just what we do. I'm just being honest with you, okay? The last, we traded handguns, I think, last year or the year before, and it'd been almost 20 years. So we take care of our equipment, and we get as much life out of it as we possibly can. So barring some crazy technology change with radio frequencies, we shouldn't have to be doing this anytime soon.
And then, Your Honor, Jessica, do we have the same issue with other public safety departments?
The fire department had upgraded their radios, I think in like 2016 or 2017, to the P-25 radios. And so I believe the fire department is good to go. I'm not sure if our public works department needs to have the same type of upgrade or?
I don't know.
Your Honor?
Yeah, Ms. Martin?
Well, would it be wise to offer ourselves another month and a half till November so we get a clearer picture and maybe more research behind our decision? I mean, I support the project, and I want to make sure that it's a sound move. I know it needs to be timely. I'm just wondering out loud if November might be a more magical moment where we know more.
I guess my only question is, what do we want to know more of?
I keep, I keep thinking.
I'd like to see if, if any more outside money could come into this project. I know that that, those sources are very limited. I know our overall financial picture becomes clearer in November. That's kind of an annual type statement and so on. I'm just wondering out loud. I'm not in opposition to the program.
Other comments or questions?
One more question, your honor?
You bet.
For the chief. If we move forward with this tonight, comes back as a resolution?
Yeah.
Is that correct, Jessica?
Correct. Anything over $45,000 requires the council to approve.
So, we're two weeks out in that. What's your turnaround, then, from the manufacturer? How far are we out?
I don't know. I don't know the answer to that question. I think it'd be fairly quick, but I don't know.
This is something, this is something they stock, obviously.
Yeah, it is. And I got to assume, I mean, for them, you know, 50 radios isn't probably a big deal. But it'd probably be fairly quick, but I haven't talked to Raycom about that.
Thank you. Thanks, chief.
Other questions or direction for a motion to give staff some direction about how to proceed?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Thank you.
Further discussion of the consulars. Let's try a public discussion. Let's go 15 seconds this time. 13, 14, 15, thank you. Roll call.
Cahill?
Yes.
Gowdy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Warren?
Yes.
Very good. Staff has direction on that one, too. The fourth is discussion of the MPD and YSS pilot project, social services embedded into the public, the police department response efforts, and a request for $25,000. Chief, you still have the mic.
Thank you, thank you. And thank you for the direction on the previous item. So, we'll come back next time with the resolution. So, this has been a rough summer for law enforcement. And it's been one of the rougher years for me personally and professionally. And I've spent a lot of time over the past several weeks reflecting on 28 years in this business. Lot of change. There's a lot of things have changed in the time that I've been on the force in the state of Iowa. And so, been a lot of changes with my attitude and how I look at my job as well, which is good. The thing that I love about this job, and I still love this job, is it's an opportunity to learn something new every day. And I can honestly say, I learn something new every day. And generally, it's learning how much I don't know, quite frankly. But this past few weeks has caused me to reflect on a lot of things. And I want to make sure that my cops have everything that they need, first of all, to be successful and safe. And what we're asking police officers to do in this country is too much, quite frankly. And police chiefs, myself included, have been talking about this for well over a decade. We're asking too much of our police officers. And the solution to every problem over the last 20 years, quite frankly, has been, well, we'll cut services here, we'll cut services there, call the cops. They'll take care of it. And we do our best. But we don't always have the resources that we need to solve some of the complex problems that exist in our community. And we can do better. We have to do better. And we've been doing a great job here, and you all have been doing a great job here. Has nothing to do with me. You've been doing a great job long before I got here. But I've had the opportunity to serve this community for almost nine years now, and I know that we try hard every day. But we have to be better, and we have to do better. And we talk a lot about community outreach and community policing, and community policing has really changed a lot over the years in my career. And it used to mean, you know, I'd see police chiefs get up and talk about community policing, and they'd talk about how they have a great bike patrol. That's not community policing, by the way. But that's what we called it. And then, we shifted to more of an outreach, and over the last 10 years, it's been problem-oriented policing has been the catchphrase. And we're always looking to solve problems. Most cops are type A personalities, and talk to my wife about type A personalities. I always have a solution to a problem, but my solutions aren't always the answer, quite frankly. And that's what we see with law enforcement. We can always come up with a solution to the problem that we're called to, but maybe that's not the right solution. And I've been thinking over the last several weeks about looking at everything as a problem, looking at people as a problem. And that mentality that can get in the way of actually being successful in our community. And maybe we need to start shifting towards looking at things as possibilities. So, I bring to you tonight a possibility. And I think this is an easy answer, and I think it'll be the best money you probably have spent in a long time, but I'm asking for a little bit of money. And we're going to continue to train our cops to solve problems, but as I've mentioned, a law enforcement solution isn't maybe always the best response. I want people in our community to have the courage to call for help when they need it. I don't want them to be afraid to call us for help. And when we show up, I want to make sure that we're bringing the appropriate resources. And these resources have to be timely, and too often, they're not. And we bring, we bring resources to the table, and we bring partnerships and collaborations to the table. The Marshalltown Police Department is well-known for collaborating in our community with a lot of different organizations and people. But at 3:00 in the morning, we need resources. We don't need a promise of a phone call tomorrow or next week. We need to bring resources. So, to me, and what we've been hearing nationally, is people have been crying for more social services in our community, more crisis intervention services. I agree with that 1,000%. And it just seems more appropriate and seems to make sense right now to try to find a way to make that happen. And partnerships between law enforcement, social services agencies, it's not really new, but maybe we need to think a little bit outside of the box about how we can make those partnerships a little more effective. And we need to open the door to new possibilities. These will be new possibilities for our department, our community, and the people that we serve. And I think we have an opportunity here to do something very special. So, about a month ago, I contacted my partner, my friend, David Hicks at YSS, and I told him what my vision was. And my vision at the time was, I wanted a social worker working for me, my employee in the police department. That's what seemed to make sense to me. But the problem with that is, it's just one person, and they're only worth so many hours. And in some ways, because they're my employee, are they doing my bidding? Is that how people in the community are going to see that? They're going to do what the chief wants. I'd rather have a partner that works closely with us, that can provide 24/7 resources, hopefully, we're going to talk about that. But they have some neutrality, too, some independence. And they can stand up and say to the chief, whoever that person is, maybe your way's not the best way, maybe we got a better way. You know, because sometimes, people need to speak truth to the chief and tell the chief what the chief needs to hear, not what the chief wants to hear. So, partnership seems to make sense, and by working with an outside agency, they bring more resources to the table, more than just one person. And we have a great partnership already with YSS here in Marshall County, and I think they're uniquely equipped to handle a variety of social problems. A lot of the partners that I work with currently, they focus on one thing, one issue. YSS focuses on multiple issues. We have a great relationship, as I said, already established with them. And I think that, and there's a memo in my packet, and there's a white paper from YSS, and David Hicks is going to get up and talk, but I think that this is the future policing, what we're talking about here. I think that we can do something revolutionary in terms of providing services to our community. The model of social work and police partnerships takes funding, and so I'm asking tonight for $25,000 to help us get started with a pilot project. And what I envision as a 12-month project and $25,000 isn't going to cut it. But what, if you approve of this funding, I think what it says is that the city is committed to doing something different, to being better, and to providing more resources in our community. And I think we can go out into the community and find more help financially to get this project off the ground. I think it's going to take $150,000 to fully fund a 12-month project. I think by doing this, bringing social services together with cops, coordinating our responses to issues, it's going to reinvent how we do things. I think it's going to result, I truly believe it will result in fewer police encounters that lead to excessive use of force. People that need services will get the services and the treatment that they need in a more timely manner. And it's going to build stronger and thriving neighborhoods and stronger and thriving communities. And I know that you feel strongly about doing that. I believe this partnership will allow us to work in a more positive and holistic manner than what we've been doing traditionally in the police services that we provide. So, that's my sales pitch. I'm going to turn it over to my friend, David Hicks, who's much smarter than me, and he'll have a better sales pitch, I promise you. But that's my perspective.
David?
David Hicks, director of YSS of Marshall County, and it's highly unfair for me to follow Chief Tupper after that pitch right there. So, chief and I have been talking probably for a couple of months about how we could do things better, how could we be another tool in their toolbox? And he's right, I think we can do a better job. And I think a lot of it comes down to agencies such as YSS, who are able to meet people where they're at, to connect with those who would be an advocate, a resource. And in some sense, we would be maybe a second responder or a third responder. As we know, the first responders usually have their hands pretty full. So, our goal is to really probably help meet the unmet needs of those experiencing a mental health issue, support parents, create alternatives, and present hope and opportunity for those in difficult circumstances who find themselves involved with a law enforcement situation. So, could be a staff person like myself who would respond if the police and family thought the social service provider could provide some resources. We then could be that warm handoff from the police to our services, to that family or individual who could provide those follow-up services. We provide a wide array of services at YSS. Family therapy, we work with kids who age out of foster care, transitional living, we do coordinated entry for our homeless programs, family development, Spanish-speaking counseling, we have a contract with juvenile court. So, we provide a wide array of services that perhaps the family would want to continue working with us, or we would provide a warm handoff then to perhaps another provider who has a certain expertise that the family is needing, that we know that we could not provide. So, we just hope to provide opportunities for engagement for the public. We have therapists who could provide some brief training for the Marshalltown Police Department in mental health, as we know that is a special population. And we know there's families out there in need, and sometimes, they're often not in need of law enforcement intervention, but they are in need of social service intervention. So, we certainly appreciate the consideration. We already provide a 24-hour support line, so we at least have some of the technical background that we could do this and some operational expertise. $25,000 isn't a lot of money, and I don't have an army of staff who could provide around-the-clock care and coverage, but I have dedicated staff that, once we get into the weeds of how we're going to operate this program, it's going to be the building blocks for what we can make much larger and better with perhaps additional staff, broader outreach services. So, this is a great opportunity. We certainly appreciate your support of YSS over the years. We just did the ribbon cutting last week of our building, which is right next door. Welcome you anytime to come over and check out what we've done with the former police department. You will be pleasantly surprised. We've added additional staff, including two mental health therapists in the last six months, another Spanish-speaking counselor who could do some in-home work. So, we are optimistic about this opportunity, but we're really sure of where we are as an agency. We've been serving this community for 37 years. I've been with the agency, it'll be 24 years tomorrow, and I've been in the field 27 years, so I have a little bit of experience myself. And when chief presented this opportunity, I thought, this is the next step. This is where we need to go. We can do this. So, we definitely appreciate your consideration and appreciate Chief Tupper's leadership. And it's certainly been a rough time for law enforcement, but now's the time where we can come alongside them and be that additional tool in their toolbox. So, thank you.
Any questions or comments? While Dave's sitting back down, he's too humble to mention it, but I happened to be in Ames last year when he got the award for the whole state of Iowa for being the YSS Director of the Year. Chief?
So, yeah, they ask us $25,000. We would also be providing some office space, because I think it's important, we're talking about embedding services into our programs. So, we want YSS personnel to spend time in our building, getting to know our troops, and we want our officers and staff to get to know their staff as well. So, we'd be providing some office space. If you approve of this request, the next step will be putting together a work group between some law enforcement folks and YSS folks, and we'll decide how we get this off the ground. We're going to have to raise a little bit more money, too, so I will probably be going around and asking for some money from some folks. But I think, I think we can do something very special here. And I think we can, most importantly, make sure that we're providing our cops with the tools that they need to be effective, and our community with the resources that they need to deal with some very complex problems. So, that's our pitch for the night, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Your honor?
Yes, sir.
So, I guess, two questions. So, one, $25,000, you're going to have to raise some more money. So, what does that additional gap look like based on what you have? Or is $25,000, if we prove that tonight, what you have?
Yeah, I think we need, I think we're going to probably need to get somewhere close to 150 to really get this off the ground. I think what I feel really good about is YSS knows how to raise some money. And Andrew Allen couldn't be here tonight, but he's pretty good at raising money. He thinks we can find some grants and some sources. I think there's people in the community that'll support this, and I have a couple of people in mind that I'm going to reach out to and ask for some help. But I think to really get this off the ground, we need 150. But I think, I think the $25,000 says something in terms of commitment from the city, and...
From a tool perspective, I think this is a bigger bang for your buck than upgrading the radios. I mean, from a community impact perspective, and that's where, I guess, from a council perspective, and I'll lean on everybody else to chime in, but $25,000, after dropping 225,000 on some upgraded radios, I'm like, what are we doing here? And so, I guess my question is, from a council perspective, what would we be willing to do more than $25,000 to minimize the gap from a grant or otherwise perspective? This is coming from the CARES Act as well, and I guess I don't know what, to Gary's point earlier, right, what additional things we're looking to allocate that money towards or use it for, but I think that's probably a serious question that I think that needs to be addressed here tonight, as far as, is it $25,000, or is it more than that? And my answer would be more.
Your honor, I think it could be more, too. I was thinking, this all makes sense to me. I had like 10 questions popped into my head, you know, while you guys were talking, and I thought, well, we don't need to answer those tonight. That's the whole point of what you're doing, so I'm supportive. I, whatever the number needs to be to start it, I think, to keep it, keep it, because the conversation, it will take a lot of hammering out details. So, whatever it takes to do that, if it's more than 25, I'm okay with that.
Your honor?
Yes.
Please, Chief Tupper, what kind of a timeframe do you see? I know you're at beginning stages of thinking about this. What kind of a timeframe do you think before this would really be operational?
Well, patience is not a virtue for me, so I'd like to go as quickly as possible, but a lot of that depends on funding, too. So, ideally, I'd like to get something off the ground by the first of the year. Okay? And I know there's a lot of questions. I have a lot of questions. This is the first time in my life that I'm coming to my bosses with a project that I don't have answers to all those questions. But we have to figure it out, and I think that's what the country wants us to do, and I think we can figure it out.
Well, I have to agree. I think this is such a proactive way to look at the relationship that the police force or the law enforcement has with our community, as well as embedding that social service in. And, you know, we try and do that at schools as well, to have that embeddedness where you can help the whole family or the whole person. And I agree with Gabe and Bethany that I'd certainly be willing to throw more money into the pot if we need to, if we can look at that, because it sounds like just a program that, again, my eyes are lit up over it, that I think it's definitely the direction we need to go.
Thank you.
You're going to sit down thinking I should ask for more?
Yeah.
You didn't have to.
Yeah.
Your Honor?
Yeah.
Yes. This question for Dave. Are there other YSS organizations, community organizations that are doing this already? Is there a model to copy?
There isn't, and that's maybe the scariest part. This, I think, fairly unique to the state of Iowa. I don't want to say we'd be the first, but certainly this is a pilot, and we're going to emphasize pilot. We'll probably learn by more mistakes than we ever do by getting it right. So, we have to figure out processes and meeting people where they are, and what's an appropriate referral, and what we can do and what we can't do. We don't have the capacity to remove children. Law enforcement do. We aren't bringing out psychologists. We just don't have that capacity. So, we're going to learn a lot at the beginning, and, you know, we'll be better eight months from now than we are six months from now. So, we're going to set up some outcomes, not sure what those are going to be, so then we could report back to the city to say we've served this many people. And again, this will be voluntary. Families can tell us to take a hike if they don't want services, but ultimately, at least I think in the back of my head, that this perhaps frees up more law enforcement time, that instead of going to a family's home where there's some discord or some issues, maybe we can be of service, and they can be out on patrol and doing what they do and using their expertise in that respect.
Well, Dave, I love this idea, because if you look at this, you know, one of my jobs in the military was processing soldiers that had a death in the family, processing their leave, and you're involved with the Red Cross. The Red Cross gets involved with house fires and things like that, or like we saw the tornado. This is long overdue. There is no agency to help these guys on a daily basis cope with the ever-changing environment of the mental health issues.
Yeah. Granted, we don't have the answers either, but, you know, law enforcement, and I certainly don't know the breadth of your training, but you probably haven't had anything more than Psychology 201 in your training, whereas we're degreed in the field, we have licenses, we have some of that expertise. So, where their expertise ends, we can take on from there, and we're not new to the community, like I said, so we already have a lot of the supports and services on the ground that we should have been hopefully utilizing for many years.
So, if we give you more money, can you start before the first of the year?
I'm not, I cannot rush this. I know Chief's on a timeframe, and first of the year sounds pretty good, but we just have to figure out how this is going to look and the process, because police are 24 hours a day, and they have 40-some officers. I've got a staff of at least 10 who are on call, but we have limitizations there as well. So, we're going to figure out how effective we can be, what our barriers are, but really we're going to focus on what we can do more than what we can't do.
If I may, I would, again, if, don't be timid about doing this, because I think the two of you together, your minds are open, and the community is open to having this service work, because we don't, I mean, we appreciate what our law enforcement does. They could certainly, we can work together to make it, as you said, even better.
One of the last meetings, I was telling about the story of people coming from all over the state, well, beyond the state, to see how the water remediation is being handled at the Kibbe Building, but also know that the school district was the first in the STEM, in a couple of different STEM programs, that had other schools coming here to look to see what they had done. And I know from past years, serving with the Childbirth Prevention Services, it too had set up some programs that were models in the state. They were pilot projects, they got funded well, they did so well, others started to emulate us. So, it would be fun to see something like that happen in this day and age after the turmoil that we've seen since about March.
Yeah, I think this is action on the ground, and this is pretty immediate that we can provide that strong of impact. It's certainly needed.
Do you agree with Chief's estimate of $150,000 for an annual?
Probably. I would like to hire staff that are just dedicated for this position. I'm not sure how many staff that would be, but I think we'll just need additional staff to be, if we want to be embedded in the police department, it's going to take more staff than what I have now. Right now, I have a rotating staff of 10 or so that are on call, but granted, I can't have a person take a call and be on site from 2:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., and then expect them to see their clients during the day, another eight hours. So, we have to kind of work out those nuances a little bit. But if we had additional staff dedicated for this, then we could see some action.
Other questions by the council? Should we open this to the public comment, too? Let's do that. Okay, I kind of did that in the reverse order. Probably should have called for a motion to direct staff to proceed with this type of idea first, and...
Your Honor, I was going to say, just to do some quick math for you, with the radios and then the citizen survey, employee survey, is approximately 21,000, so that's only 246,000 of 633,000 that you've kind of put some holds on at this point. So, I would say, I would say that we would have definitely more that will be basically surplus in the general fund once we do receive the CARES dollars to be able to put towards that.
Thank you.
Your Honor? Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Bethany.
Well, no, go ahead. I was going to make a motion, so, all right. So, somebody said earlier tonight that we'll know everything by November, have like clarity around the budget, so I'm just kidding. It was a joke. I made a joke. It was a bad joke. Totally felt that.
But everybody's laughing now.
Nobody's laughing. I thought it was really funny to hear, because I thought, wow, I'd love to have some certainty around the future. So, I was just thinking, could we have a report, maybe in a few months, about how things are going and what the needs are? Because I think, I'm okay giving them what they're asking for, so I move that we just planned it, 25 now, but I think I'd like a report in October, November, about how things are, how things are looking, what they're thinking. There's my motion.
Thank you. I had some motions, there are a second.
I'll second.
Thanks, Mr. Martin. I guess I, well, let me call for discussion by consellers again. I'm probably not going to unmute the mics again. Anybody else want to weigh in before we vote up here?
Your Honor, I'd like to amend that motion, if I may. As much as I hate spending taxpayers' money, I love this idea. I want to see it start tomorrow. I want to see other people jump on board, but I don't want to slow it down and wait for those people. I would amend this motion that, using the CARES Act money, that we fund 150,000 of it tonight and get it going. I think this is, I just, I think, I feel that strongly about it.
I will second.
I forget whether we need to have discussion on motions to amend or not. Are those non-debatable? Roger, Jessica, I didn't bring my Roberts Rules of Order about it.
I think we can have discussion on it.
Well, might as well have discussion, even if the Roberts Rules don't require it.
Although you want it to start tomorrow, I'm on call tonight for my office, so this will be a slow rollout.
That wasn't a deal breaker, David.
Okay.
I was making a joke.
Yours fell flat, too.
Yeah. With this amount of money and us being a nonprofit, that's no joke, so that's a lot of money. But, in all seriousness, we want to do this right. It'd make time to get this off the ground, so I don't want the results to be too far out there before we can do it right.
I wanted you to do it right, too. The last thing I want is any of your people in harm's way. I want to make sure there's a lot of boxes checked.
Thank you.
But I want this to happen.
Thank you.
Further discussion on the motion to amend?
And I just want to add to that, because David and I had a discussion, I think, over the weekend, but it would be my recommendation that YSS would be the fiscal agent of this project, because it's really going to be their staff, and the money's going to be going to hiring people. Everything that I'm providing, we already have, so my recommendation would be that YSS would be the fiscal agent for whatever money the city contributes to the cause, and then whatever money is raised down the road to keep it going.
Thank you. Any further discussion by the consellers? Otherwise, I'll open it to the public again.
Your Honor, I guess one thing I would like to see, and I imagine this is in your thought process, but I have a feeling that this will make some direct correlations to whether people are incarcerated or arrested, or, and I think that that data is going to show us that, again, this aspect of dealing with having social services deal right alongside with our law enforcement, maybe, I mean, it just may put us in a whole nother category of preventative enforcement. I don't know if that's a real thing, but I think that that's what it's going to do. It's going to give people options that, when you're up there alone, there may only be one option, we either have to take in, or, I mean, that may be the only option.
I absolutely agree with that. Absolutely agree with that. And I want you to know that we're putting far too many people in jail. We've been doing that for far too many years in this country, and the problem for us is when you call the cops, you call 911, we're the only resources. We come up, we come, we show up with a law enforcement solution, okay? And too often, it's limited. And so, this is going to open some options for us, and I fully believe that we're going to see reduction in arrests. It's, you know, we're going to have to figure out how best to deliver the services, though. So, too often, you know, many times, here's what, here's what happens, is the cops are called, and we show up, and we try to de-escalate the problem, and we get everybody calmed down, and we think we have it resolved, and then an hour later, we're back, and then maybe the next afternoon, we're back, and eventually, we have to arrest somebody. I think we can show up the first time and maybe bring some resources with us, or have quick access to resources that will prevent call number two, call number three, that lead to the arrest, so...
You know, I think that, as I think Gary said, we want your people to be safe, we want your law enforcement people to be safe, but I think this is going to make our community safer as well. It's going to provide just a whole nother layer of law enforcement, but also of community involvement and building that relationship with people. So, again, I am in support of the amendment that was put out.
Others up here? If not, let's call for the public and go 15 seconds again.
All the lines are unmuted.
Go ahead and mute, and let's call the roll.
Warren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Gowdy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Are we voting on the original or the amendment?
The amendment.
The amendment.
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Okay, like carried, and so the motion has been amended, and now I, does anybody feel the need to have further discussion about the motion itself after it's been amended? Starting to smell like a dead horse. Not a dead horse, it's a good project, but I think we've all had our say. Let's call the roll on the motion then to direct staff to work on a proposal for 150, up to $150,000 to help fund this pilot project.
Cahill?
Yes.
Gowdy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Warren?
Yes.
Like carried as well. Staff has direction on that one, and we're down to the fifth and last of the published items, and that's a discussion of the 2019A.
Thanks, guys.
Yes, thank you very much.
GEO bonds, bond proceeds. I'm so disappointed I couldn't be at the open house last week, and you can't have regular open houses like you typically do. I'm anxious to get back and see the facilities. I got a tour a few months ago, but I can't wait to see them, maybe tomorrow. Who would like to lead the discussion on the GEO proceeds?
I will lead this one, Your Honor, and so I'm not going to move around it and everything, so I apologize to those who are behind me. But thank you for participating in the survey that I sent out that was looking at $1.1 million in general obligation bonds that we let you know about back in May, that were left over from the 2019A general obligation bond that you could reallocate. We brought those to you in May so that you could determine whether or not you wanted to reduce our current year borrowing, and you decided at that time, nope, let's move forward. We still didn't know a lot in May at that point, of which these bond proceeds, one of the things that you guys ranked was using them to either pay off a bond or to put more towards our, buying down our debt service. Those two things did not rank in the highest point. There were some really good cutoff points. I don't know that you guys all planned this or not, but there was a group of four and threes, and then another group of things that ranked in the twos, and then another group of the bottom that were in the 1.0 to 1.99 range. And so, as I looked at this, I thought this was a really great starting point for discussion about those top items, which were the cost overrun for the Coliseum construction, which we had previously talked about using these bond proceeds for that, and that was the highest ranked. The others, replenishing our dangerous and dilapidated building fund, as well as additional funding for our annual street repair program, and additional trail repaving dollars as well. And so, ultimately, process-wise, you just can't go spend these on certain things. We need to run this through bond counsel, as if it was not in approved purpose in the original authorization for the bond back in 2019. You have to set a new public hearing for it, so like the Coliseum money, we wouldn't transfer that right away. It'd be something that you'd have to set a public hearing and hold a public hearing for. So, I guess I'm just looking for any comments that you might have, and how you might like to proceed at this point in time.
Your Honor?
Yes, Martin.
Question for Jessica. Under the annual street repair program, does that include construction of handicap access from the street to the sidewalk? And does it also include, or are we already paying for the walking bridge on the East-South Ridge Road retention pond?
Yes, so actually, one of the projects that was part of the 2019 GEO bond is the replacement of that bridge. That's one of those projects that came in significantly under budget, so the Timber Creek Park Bridge will be replaced here at some point. And Justin, I don't know if you want to come off mute to talk about curb ramps as part of street repairs?
Justin Nickel, Public Works Director. To answer Counselor Martin's two questions, yes, our general policy is anytime we do street repairs, we evaluate the adjacent handicapped ADA ramps and attempt to make repairs or updates or upgrades to the ADA ramps adjacent to any street program. And then, secondly, the Timber Creek Park Bridge has taken somewhat longer than we had hoped, but still have hopes of completing that either this fall or hopefully the very first thing in the spring, if we aren't able to complete it this fall.
Okay, thank you.
Other input?
Your Honor, I have a question for Jessica, if I may.
You go.
Jessica, what things would fall in the category that we would not have to have a public meeting on, that we could just, we could allocate these funds?
That's a, that's a good question. I don't know the answer to that one off the top of my head. I'd have to go... of my head. I'd have to go back and look at the originating resolution from 2019.
I gotta believe repaying, repaying the loan itself.
Yes, that's one of those things that generally does not require you to take any action for anything, but I-
And then if, if it was voted for Merle Hibbs, if we just extended it, because obviously the plan is to go all the way to 12th Avenue, why wouldn't we just get more bang for our buck this year at this interest?
So that would involve some additional surveying, scope of work and purchasing of land. And so that's, that's where there's a little bit more there than, than just building more of a street.
So we bought just enough land to go as far as we're going?
Correct.
Never mind on that one, then.
I can tell you, one of the items, Michelle did inform me today that after hearing back from Iowa Great Places Group, we decided that this year is probably not a year to move forward with a, a grant application because of the, the, the competition and the funding and the, I think there's a million dollars available to award out to, I think, a number of cities that, that could be applying for that money. And we didn't feel that three, we were likely to get 350,000 for the West End Park Project. So that one is, is probably coming off the, the list at this point. It's still something we'll keep in our capital improvement plan to look at in future years, but that was definitely one, one change.
And one more follow-up question, if I may. There are other things beyond the scope of your questionnaire that this money could be used for with a public hearing, right? Public meeting?
Yeah. And that's where I did leave an open-ended question at the end. And so there was, I'm going to assume it was Councilmember Martin who asked about ADA accessible sidewalks and things. And then there was another one about making sure that we're sticking with the projects that we have going on this year. And so those are different, those are funded in a different bond and those are moving forward.
Your Honor, we, we were-
Thank you.
Sorry. Ms. Kinzer and I were talking about the street repairs. I was wondering about this damage to the streets I've seen from all of the heavy equipment. And you mentioned some FEMA funding. Can you go over the split? Because I'm not sure I understood that correctly.
Yeah. So this is a, a great, a great example of, it's a, the work category is called Category C permanent work with, within FEMA. And that's actually, as you look at our northeast side, the work that's been happening on Bromley and Fourth Avenue and Fifth Avenue and a few other streets up in that area, that is actually a Category C project from the tornado. And so the FEMA covers 75% of that cost if they approve of the project. And then, I should say, that one has more to it than just the, the resurfacing, which was being covered. And then the state adds in 10%, which leaves us with 15% remaining. Justin, Nickel and I had already had a conversation that we believe that we can come up with a number of other asphalt overlay projects in, throughout the community that would probably fit a FEMA Category C project for the current disaster. And so we will be looking at that quite heavily to see what, what we can verify to FEMA that we have maintenance and repair records on, which is one of the things that they'd asked about previously. And then, you know, put together some project scopes to get some funding obligated as part of this current disaster.
So I guess to add on to that question, when do we think we would have those numbers that would help fill in the, the blank gap for the estimated cost of what our 15% share would be?
Oh, probably not until sometime in 2021. We're not even probably going to get a scoping meeting with FEMA for, I don't know, it seems like maybe in the next, so the requests for public assistance are due this week on the 16th. And then I believe that it's, they have 60 days to have a scoping meeting with us and we have 60 days to generally identify. And so that's where we'll, we'll identify. I think we just have to have some really rough costs that we would do kind of a high level and then we can start to work back on, on things. So I should say within 60 days, but I don't know how, how good of the cost those will be.
Your Honor?
Yes.
If, if we need to wait for that information, is, is, what's the issue with this unspent money from this bond? Is, are we getting penalized for not putting it towards a project? Are we?
Well, I think 75% has to be spent within three years of borrowing. So it's making sure that we have some things to do. So there's going to be some things that, you know, like it might not match FEMA because of, you know, the, the funding and stuff. I would say that we, we needed to commit something to the Coliseum construction overrun to make sure that we were solid there. So that one is definite. Our dangerous and dilapidated building fund is, it's, it's sort of moving in a direction that we're going to need some additional funding there, probably likely before the end of the year. So that's a conversation that we're, we're going to need to have. And then outside the annual street repair program, in this current bond, the 2020 bond, there is $250,000 that is put towards trail paving, which, as was noted earlier, it's not going to be just resurfacing. It's actually going to be pulling things out and replacing asphalt with concrete on the existing trail system. And that ultimately, if we can increase the scope of that, it's good to know that right now when we're still developing a scope for that project rather than waiting until later. So it's more of a, that one is, if you want to add more money to it, then that just makes Jeff's job a little bit easier in figuring out what his scope is. Otherwise, it's a, it would have to probably wait until the next year's project type of thing.
So we could do a couple things and then wait until we have more information to finalize other things?
Yeah, you certainly could. The only thing that would be duplicated would be just some public hearing costs and things and publication costs, but that's fairly minimal in this. So either way, I think the, the Coliseum stuff is the, is the big stuff. Like I said, probably in the next 60 to 90 days, we'll probably know more on the dangerous and dilapidated building fund and be able to talk about that. But it's something that will probably be, we can't approve more projects until there's funds allocated. So it's more of a, how, how prepared would you like to be on, on some of this?
My, my personal preference would, so is there an ask for the DND fund then, as far as what we think might be coming versus how much we want to put in there? I'm just trying to put, fill in the gaps from a dollar amount. So if 60 to 90 days is the answer where we think we'd have an answer for the street repair program and possibly the DND as far as scope of work. And I'm, I'm on board with obviously the, the four that are at the top of the list. I, there's a lot of trail out there. So I, it's a question of, that's, that's the one that we could fill in tonight, not knowing the other two if we wanted to, as far as a estimate.
Which one do you fill in tonight?
The trail. The street program, we're gonna have to wait. The DND, we could wait to have a little bit more identified scope of what that dollar amount could or should need to look like for funding. Trail's kind of the one that's really up to our discretion. At my, and there's plenty of it that needs to be repaired or replaced. So I, I don't know. Personally, I'm not objected to any of those top four as far as the reallocation of those funds. I guess it's kind of a question as to the trail repaving or replacement, what, what we want that to look like from my perspective.
If, if I, I would say that the DND fund's going to need at least $250,000. That's a, that's an at least. That would hopefully get us through the end of the fiscal year with some fairly significant projects that would be on the list. I would say my hope is that we'll have another residential DND project out by the early January to be completed before June 30th of, of next year. And that we would be looking at potentially some larger commercial demolitions that will probably be more costly, hopefully after the first of the year. So I think that one's at least a $250,000. But like I said, more, more just means that's potentially more that we can get done. It doesn't mean that I will not be coming back to you and saying we need to put more money towards this based on the bids that we've received. So I would say that's, that's my minimum on that one. The street repair program is one where we have some funding amounts currently in the road use tax fund for this current fiscal year. And Justin, I'm hoping you can unmute yourself and remind me, did we, did we allocate this fiscal, this fiscal year's amounts from road use tax to the FEMA project? Or did we use last fiscal year's amounts?
I do not remember off the top of my head. I may be able to find it while I'm sitting here at my desk, but I don't remember.
Okay. So that's, that's one point of clarification, I guess, that we were not sure. I, I know that there was, we did have to delay the crack ceiling project because it came in overbid. One of the things I mentioned to Councilmember Isom is that I think we should try for a Category C project on that because we knew what a scope of work was on those streets prior to the derecho. Now we know there's a different scope of work, so there is a difference in quantities there. One of the things, and I'll actually, let me go down here on the, the scroll down. So the street repair program is something that gets bigger here as we talk about things in future years. And that's where I wanted to pull that up to annual street repair program. So what you can't see on the top there is fiscal year '22, '23, '24, that we've, we've kind of built into our debt capacity, at least for you to consider, $3 million a, a year towards our annual street repair program. And that would be in general obligation bond fund. That does not include anything that we do have in the road use tax fund, kind of budgeted on an annual basis for some concrete repairs and other things, which we would then have some flexibility to determine, do those things stay in the road use tax fund if we have 300 mil, or 3 million available or not. So as we start thinking about what does next year's budget look like, next year's budget would be making a request for $3 million in general obligation bonds for construction in calendar year 2022. That's probably where you think about where we're at right now in our borrowing cycle. This was really, we just borrowed for, for this fiscal year. Doing that at this time next year, getting that money on hand in the fall means that there's really no way to, to have fall projects planned then. So that would be funding things in calendar year 2022. So we still need to work out what calendar year 2021 looks like. And I think that's where we'll need to revisit, you know, what, what do we have in road use tax available, as well as then what, what might be available through these sources. I would have to guess that depending on how quickly, we ran into a project, a problem with our current FEMA project and that FEMA didn't obligate it until September of 2019, which meant there was no way that we could have a project completed within the, the timeline that they wanted us to, which I think was within 24, 18 or 24 months of, of the disaster. And so we could run into the same thing here, depending on how quickly FEMA obligates our projects. We don't know that until we, we get there. But that's where we could run into some things where we're not able to do any of those FEMA projects from this current disaster until perhaps 2022 construction season at the earliest. We'll hope for 2021, but no guarantees.
I, I like the top four also. If we, can we just tentatively put 300 toward the Coliseum, 250 toward DND, and 300 toward the street repair, two, another 250 toward the trails as a preliminary plan so that people can know what to expect? I know it, it's like nothing for street repair. 300,000 does almost nothing, but it's better than nothing, slightly better than nothing.
Your Honor, two questions, if I may. Jessica, if we do this and have the public meetings and everything, and then like the Coliseum, if we don't need the whole 300,000, are we back with the, the few dollars and cents we got to reallocate?
So, no. What, whatever authority you set is basically authority that would continue to exist. So let's say there, there's only 250,000 needed for the Coliseum. If you do a public hearing that real allocates these things to dangerous and dilapidated building trails, you should be able to use that authority as well. The, the, the one difference, and I need to, this is where I'm, I'm not a bonding attorney or anything, the Coliseum, I think, is the weird one because it's a building project. And that's where I think it is general corporate purpose, where the others might be essential corporate purpose. So we might have some differences there, but there'd be some allocation error.
He'll let us know, right?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
And then the other thing I wanted to say is, I think there's a lot of people that live on streets that are graded D and F that would love to see us throw a nickel or a dime more towards street, the street resurfacing and, and repair. So yeah, I, I know 250,000, or you said what, 300?
300.
300,000 is nothing in the big scheme of things, but, but man, it's 300,000 more than they had yesterday. I'd love that idea. Because, you know, we're building a lot of new streets, but we're not doing a lot to, for these taxpayers living on these bad streets. So I agree with that. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you.
Could I ask just one question?
You can.
Or is not the change order for the Coliseum already in the 350,000 range?
Yeah, so-
That was brought way back.
Yeah. So Jeff and I looked at that. And you have to remember, you allocated $92,000 from the sale proceeds of the fire station. So this is really looking at an estimated $392,000 in change orders. You've just covered 92 of that right now. So Jeff looked at where we were at, added in, I think, 15,000 to 20,000 as a cushion to hopefully get us through and that we're feeling pretty good about that.
All right. I'm just, I just, that's very important to, to get that done. And I'd hate to drag your feet somewhere two months from now.
Just to make sure that we're, yeah, just to make sure that we're covered. That's, that was the only question I was gonna, or to interject was is, I'd like the options. We've all voted on them. We know the top four where we're putting the money. It's just how do we want to divide it up? And, and I, as far as I'm concerned, Bethany hit it right on the nose. As long as the Coliseum is, is being taken care of with that 300 grand, I'm all, I'm good with it. I'd second that motion. If she, if she-
That was a motion. Yep. I'll take that as a second.
Trying to get home.
Sounds good.
Any further discussion up here?
Bethany's just mad that her joke failed earlier.
Really not.
She just wants to go home.
I swear.
No, I mean, I just, we talk about beating a dead horse.
Yeah. You can lead a horse to water, but nothing smells worse than a dead horse, by the way. Well, there are a few things that do, kind of, I think of it.
You're not really gonna elaborate on that.
No, I'm not. And don't ask. Send me a personal message later. Let's go ahead and unmute the mics in case anybody out there left. And I think there was only one or two I don't even know that are on the call still. While we're waiting the 15 seconds, as I was driving here at 5:20, I heard on Iowa Public Radio that Justin was going to be on the radio at 5:35. So I hope that went well. Have to see if we can find that spot later to talk about our derecho recovery efforts around here. Okay, 15 seconds is up. Let's vote.
Hoop? Isom?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Warren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Very good. Staff has directions on that one as well. We are now at the item of the agenda where it's open for public comment. And I have to read another proviso. Members of the public may make comments on any item not on the agenda during this time. Approach the mic, state your name and address. Limit the comments to three minutes unless a longer comment is authorized by yours truly. Direct comments to the mayor and council as a whole. The mayor and council shall not engage in discussion or debate on items raised by members of the public and actually may be taking out items raised in public comments in order to comply with the open meetings laws. I'll try to abide by that this time. I kind of violated that last meeting or two. Does anybody wish to approach the microphone here in the building?
Oh, my God.
Real quick. I just want to say thank you for your support of our projects tonight. And you have my commitment. We're going to work like the dickens to make it work. And we're not going to let you down. So I really appreciate everything that you do to support us. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Anyone else? Yes. Come on up.
Hello, everybody. My name's Chris Cooper. I'm coming here, just had some concerns and some questions. See if I can get some answers or maybe some help. It's in regards to some nuisance issues.
I was supposed to ask you your address, too. I'm sorry.
Seriously? Okay.
Yeah.
8817 North Fourth Avenue?
Okay.
Here in Marsh Town?
Yep.
The reason why I'm calling, or approaching tonight is about just some nuisance issues around my neighborhood, I guess. I know that I've had, myself have had some non-compliance, I guess. And I was aware of it. It was just on my part. And I've taken care of it. And I've kind of developed a little bit of a relationship with the nuisance officer and made him aware of my concerns. However, those- officer and made him aware of my concerns. However, those concerns have kind of fallen by the wayside. And I've been patient and have tried to continue to proceed, get some progress done with it, and it's just not happening. And I'm frustrated because I'm, one, it's not happening, but also because of said issues, some tall weeds and such on my property that I've taken care of. Multiple times, when I was approached about those issues on my property, it seemed to me like they were on, and it wasn't let go until it was taken care of, like, prompt, prompt, prompt. My complaints have fallen on deaf ears, and again, obviously, this is probably, this is my opinion, but my concerns are, my complaints are much more severe, I guess, instead of just, just some long weeds and a couple things like that. So I guess I'm just looking for some help, what I can do to get said stuff done. I know, obviously, with the storm, that has really kind of taken priority in the, in the city. I've taken that into account. But this has been going on for, off and on for years, and I've reached out, and unfortunately, there's been a couple different things, but one, it is difficult, who do you call? Call the nuisance officer. There's been times I've been bounced around to Public Works, I've been bounced around to other entities or agencies within the city government, and it's really frustrating. Being my, my location, I know it's a lower kind of income area, and I just kind of feel like we're kind of being overlooked a little bit. And then, like I said, on, on top of it, my property seems to have kind of, keeps getting addressed. I don't know if there's someone that really has a problem with me, so they wanna make sure that they're on top of me or what, but I just feel like more should be done. And before, that's basically my, my thing. I'm, I'm all kind of speaking on behalf of my mother, which she, maybe she will or won't come up, but she's having a problem with her, her property as well. So if you need to make that a separate thing, that's more than fine.
Sure.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Finished? Done?
It is, sure.
Thank you for listening to me today. I'm Jeanette Cooper. I live at 114 North 8th Street here in Marshalltown. I've lived here off and on throughout my life. I, this last time I moved back in 2006, and I've recited, resided at this address. I'm, I understand the issues with the trees and that, but I have a problem at the back of the lot. I have a utility access alley at the back of my lot. My neighbor has a big, old, old, huge oak tree that overhangs both yards over the alley, and every year, a lion has to come through and cut out because power lines are back there to free them up. Well, out of the blue, I've had two branches come down. And one of them, I guess, was on my neighbor's side, but the end of it twisted around, boom, took down my chain link fence. The other branch took down the other side of my chain link fence. So through calls with a lion, they came out and they took the back half of the tree out. This is a huge, huge tree. I am so concerned with the self, safety and welfare of the kids behind me, and even though the back half of the tree branches have been removed, it's not gonna stop the branches from falling on the power lines. I have kids' houses are behind me directly to the opposite side, and to the other side of my neighbor, Jerry McCann, is another family houses. That tree will take down their privacy fence and injure them. And this, for the welfare of these kids, not only that, if I lose the power, I need power for my oxygen. I had to move out of town because of this last storm. And now with this last storm, I've had another huge branch come down. But in the meantime, after a lion was out, I made multiple phone calls and was finally able to get in touch with Kristen Titus, the horticulturist. And through several phone calls and not coming to my house, she finally made it. She looked and she took pictures, and she agreed, that tree need to come down. It's dead. Because on the neighbor's side, it's dying. It's got dead branches. So that tree's gotta come down. That's not your responsibility. It's, it's, it's a safety hazard. So, okay, she'd get back to me. It's just within, outside of the easement, so it's not in the alleyway. It's in my neighbor's backyard, but he doesn't wanna do anything. He wants me to pay, pay him for part of it. Anyway, so Kristen gets back to me, and she says, you're gonna need to talk to Joe, the nuisance officer. And I said, well, can't you talk to him since you've already been working with me? No, you have to make the complaint. So I called Joe. I dealt with my neighbor, with Joe, last year. And Joe come out there, multiple phone, phone, multiple phone calls, they don't refer, return phone calls. It's very frustrating. This all happened like the, in June. And Kristen finally makes it out at the end of July, and Joe makes it out at the end of July. And he comes back there, and he looks over, yeah, the tree's gotta come down, and he'll get in touch with Jerry McCann, the next door neighbor. And he looks in the backyard, he says, oh, my gosh, I guess Jerry doesn't learn. We just got done cleaning that whole backyard out. I just have a constant problem, and it's trees. But that, it's a safety hazard back. Some kid is gonna get injured. And, you know, I'm, I understand it's a problem with getting trees removed. I've got an issue. I've got trees to, I've got my neighbor's tree on top of my garage. I gotta get a new roof. I know it takes time to get people, but it's a back tree that needs to be taken care of before somebody's killed or injured. These are little kids that are all playing out there. They've had birthday parties, up to 10 little kids running around. Somebody's gonna get hurt. I'm a retired nurse. I practiced for over 43 years. I have a love for children. I do not wanna see anybody injured. And now I'm taking into consideration of my health. And I also have out front a city tree that's destined to be taken down. I've had tree trimmers come on my dime, twice, taken down branches. And the demolition team came through, they removed one branch, and over my driveway and over the sidewalk out the street is another branch, just laying there, and they're crooks, ready to come down. I have, it's an active neighborhood, a lot of people are walking. That, that branch is gonna come down. Nothing's holding it. And I'm dreading this winter coming on, when the cold and the winter comes through, and the wind and stuff. What's gonna happen with these trees? Well, my biggest concern is for the tree in the back. It really needs to be taken care of, and Joe doesn't get back to me. And the last time I called him was in the descent, or the end of August. And I don't hear back. I'm just looking for answers. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. The mic is still open for other public comment, and if nobody else rises from the chair to get up here, I'll open the mic for 15 seconds in case anybody wants to unmute and comment from afar. Okay, time is up on that, and I will declare the council meeting is adjourned, and the time is 7:29 PM. Thanks for coming, folks.